The Open Meetings Act is posted on the wall. Roll call.
Polly?
Here.
Buckminster? Rod?
Here.
Wisdom?
Here.
Ferguson?
Here.
Ratcliffe?
Here.
Forager?
Here.
Layden?
Here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Under the mayor's report, I want to proclaim the May twelfth through the eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, as a National Skilled Nursing Care Week in Fall City, and encourage all community members to recognize and participate in activities in the event. Any administrator?
All right, I didn't have a written report, but I'll go over a few things. I do plan on having a month of reports. I tried to do our, like a written one every other week, and that's been slacking off with my other duties. So I'm building a webpage that will end up publishing administrator's reports too. So the Off-Cycle of the Treasures Report, off like a full one-month recap. This is my kind of plan for that, but I'll go over a few items from April. We implemented the ERP nine Community Development Module, which is one of the TylerTech modules, as we continue through that component. That manages our business licensing and permitting, so the licensing for our contractors, all the liquor licenses, those components, all getting managed through that system, and then actually allows us to provide those services online also. So applications for building permits, licensing, all that can be done through our payment portal, just like where you do utility payments. So they'll see if anybody gets in there, there'll be a little spot for building permits and licensing. The next step is the Parks and Recreation Module. We had our initial kickoff for that. They're going through, we'll start configuration here in May with a go-live of that component in mid-July. That'll bring on rentals for like Pritchard, kind of like cabin, also online ability, and managing through that.
So are you gonna do ballparks too?
Yeah.
Molotovs?
Yep, they'll be able to do the scheduling through that, or if not, we use a Google Calendar and try to manage those. Financial side of things, we're working through Execute Time Module, so that is the time in attendance where all employees do clock in and clock out. We've been running that in a couple different pilot systems and parallel with our existing time management system. So we're trying to work out all the kinks, make sure that's all jiving with our negotiation agreements, our collective bargaining agreements, and then city policy. It does allow, or will replace our time management software when that is fully done. We should hopefully, we're actually in the live system now and bringing it in for the payrolls. So that allows employees will be able to go clock in, clock out stations at the workstations, blocking in and outs, and then also mobile for those that need to, like police departments. For those, we have geofencing locations set up on those to control that for each department, to make sure they're blocking in in the right locations and not from a house outside the area. Just an idea of that. We pretty well have most of our seasonal staff hired, so we got a little over thirty seasonal staff between the aquatic center, cemetery, public works, and utility departments. So that's pretty well wrapped up, most of those, some of those have started, and the rest will start here in May. We do have a new, a new full-time dispatcher started in April, on April one, Kathy Kurfman, and our new utility bookkeeper, or additional utility bookkeeper, Elizabeth Cam started on April one. So we have applications out, are accepting applications for utility technician in the gas department, still looking for a part-time cashier receptionist here at City Hall, a library aide, as we're looking at opening library back open again on weekends, and an assistant power plant engineer, which got posted out last Friday. Public safety side, let's see, police chief, deputy chief, dispatcher, lead dispatcher, Marcy, fire chiefs, and myself attended the Richardson County Mutual Aid Meeting. Chief Baker brought in an update for nine-one-one center policies. He'll go into a little bit more in depth. We also attended the nine-one-one committee meeting on April twelfth, which is the old southeast group of primary PSAPS. Project-wise, let's see what we got. Phase one of the street projects, so Fourteenth Street, there's gonna be sections of that opening back up. They're finalizing a few floors there. Quick Shop should be reopened later this week is the hope, as long as our concrete streets come back. They have seven-day breaks tomorrow, so if that's good, they'll push the barricades back and reopen that access up from Harlan. Fourteenth Street will still be blocked off, the remainder of Fourteenth Streets, and hopefully that'll be back open on May twentieth is the plan. But they will start doing the asphalt millings in the week of the thirteenth on West Fourteenth, Fulton Street, Twenty-Fifth Street. That's what we put notices out on that as they're moving around doing those components. There'll be some delays there, but not completely block out the streets because as they mill them, they can reopen them back up before they do what they pay them. Our PDC was set on its foundation, so for electrical project, we're still waiting for some components within that. The contractor comes back on site in the next four to six weeks to get those installed. Underground work for the electrical distribution, they're still moving forward. We met with some local electricians to try to go through how to do tie-ins with new businesses once that underground is there. There's got to be some local electrician work that Watts doesn't do, that requires state permitting. Board of Public Works is coordinating that, making sure that's kind of seamless for the businesses downtown. The force main project, which we awarded a grant, EPA grant for, we're still awaiting the funding for the, I guess the funding notice from EPA for that. That project's in final design stages, we want to get a bid out. That's why once that funding's released, we have twelve months to get that built. So it's geared up, pretty much ready to go. We just need the notice of the lead of money. Tiger Trail project, or I guess it's no longer Tiger Trail, I should rename that. I think that's Morehead Court there, or Dorrington Court. That's pretty well punchless items there, so we should be opening all that up here really soon, up on Champion's Crossing. The airports, bid out there, payment rehab and striding project. They're getting ready to make that award, that's low bid, or low bid was awarded, but it hasn't been those received from FAA yet or NDOT. That'll be happening pretty quick. And they also kicked off a remodel project for their terminal. They hired APMA, Alitornia Makedo Architecture, and doing an interior remodel of that facility. So trying to update that and bring it out of nineteen seventy. That's all I got.
Chief? Just a couple things. First thing is, we are going to, the department's going to participate in the Make It Click, the seatbelt enforcement, it's May twentieth to June second. We got approved for the grant through NDOT to cover the overtime for officers to work that program. The second thing is, a little longer, is it's the dispatching. I was asked to participate in the rural fire, not the rural fire, it'd be the firemen, all the fire chiefs and the departments to get together in reference to what's going on with dispatch and what we're going to do, or how it's gonna work. First thing was, is Richardson County went to the region, nine-one-one region's request to be part of our group, which they did get that done, so I ordered our region group for the nine-one-one. And the second thing is, is they have to go before the Public Service Commission to be authorized to be secondary PSAP. With the secondary PSAP, they can't answer calls. They can only be transferred calls from the private owners of Fall City, and they won't receive any funding from the state to operate as a secondary PSAP. With that, they basically, they essentially duplicate all the equipment and the software along with the connection to Lumen that's Fall City dispatch has right now. And then they have to have a MOU between them. It's mandated by state between Fall City and, between Richardson County and us, on the operation of the nine-one-one. So last week, the county did approve theirs through the commissary's meeting, and they handed it to me, but it just wasn't sufficient at this point. We needed to add a lot more into the procedures. So Marcy and I are working through that to get the procedures for transfers to the Richardson Sheriff's Office and make sure it's clear on both sides of whose duties are what. So we're working on that, and shortly it should be before the council for approval. Before that, we have to go to the attorney to make sure it's all good. But I think the fire meeting went pretty well.
A little long.
A little long, but it went relatively well. They had a lot, I know they had a lot of questions on how they, and had some constructive criticism on how to push forward with dispatching and make it a little better. So it all went well. Any questions on how that's gonna work for the dispatch?
You'll bring us the final draft or the understanding of this later before you ever get there?
Marcy and I, Samper's also involved in it too, because he's helped set up some of the transfer stuff with the phone company. We're gonna sit down with Anthony, go through it first, and make sure that all of our bases are covered the best we know, and then we'll send it to the city attorney's office to have them review it before it comes to the council. And then hopefully.
We have to present that again to the county then, final draft?
We have to send it back to the county. It's just, they, the state had one drawn up because a secondary PSAP is not common. This is, I think there's only one other one in the state, I believe. So they had a draft for it, they sent it to us, but I just, I felt that it was a little light on the procedural side of it. I want to make sure that everybody's on the same page on the procedures for transfer, for emergency and non-emergency, so.
What is the benefit to us for them to, is there any benefit at all to us for them to be a secondary PSAP?
No.
Is it detrimental to us at all?
No, it's mainly, the reason why they wanted it is, they felt they wanted the mapping. You could operate, we could actually transfer nine-one-one calls to them without all this. They, we could have transferred it to a designated line out there, just a regular phone line, and that they just wouldn't have, wouldn't have the geocom mapping, because that's linked in with the Lumen and the nine-one-one. So that's what they basically pushed for. But other than that, there is no other benefit.
Thank you.
Under the consent agenda, we have minutes approval, April fifteenth. Agenda approval claims approved from thirteenth through the twenty-sixth. Consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Seven yeas.
Go to business, go to regular business, have a public hearing, request for animal permit at eight oh six East eleven Street to house a total of two goats. Hearing's open.
Yep, six thirteen. Fisher, do you want to talk anything through the?
So we're requesting for two goats to be at our facilities out of place there on E sixteen, East eleven Street for four H. Our daughter is a clover bud and everything, she will be going into regular four H coming next year. So we want to go and get her used to getting, doing chores, understanding what it is about four H and the responsibility of animals. So we thought, instead of bringing a cow in or a pig, goats are very manageable. And on our property, we actually are going to have, we have already a support, one fence all the way around our lots, and then we are actually putting, we have another six-foot fence in our area that they are going to be staying in. They have a camera system on them already, so I mean, our goats are gonna be very maintained, but obviously, we don't want them to eat our garden either. So it's just asking the council to give us a permit to go and have these goats. They, I would like, I would have liked to have them in March, so she could start working with them and then be in a learning relationship. And then we're planning on getting rid of them in September. They will go back out to my aunt's farm or be sold. So this is just, it is temporary. It's something we're gonna do every year, we'd like to, and it's just, it's, I guess, this helped promote four H in our community, because right now, if you guys don't know, four H is very low in participants. So this gives us an opportunity, if we can go make this come through, maybe we have other youth out there that could go and participate and ask for permits. So I just, it's an encouragement and a way to grow our board further.
Any other comments? Then I declare the hearing closed.
Six sixteen.
Eight oh six.
Move on to number.
Eight oh six, she said eight sixteen's where our house is. Eight oh six is the next door house that we own.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've got it on here. Okay, yeah.
Move on to number two, discussion in action. Animal permit at eight oh six East eleven Street to house a total of two goats.
I'll just talk briefly about it. So we did the publication, which is why we went through the public hearing, just to get council and everybody up to speed on city ordinance. We have ordinance that essentially allows for animal permits where allowed. That was put in place in two thousand eight, I believe there was amendment done with that. And then in two thousand fourteen, when you adopted the new zoning matrix, that defined where as permitted was only within TA one zones, which is transitional agriculture, which actually, we do not have any transitional agriculture zones designated currently. All of our animal permits that we currently have are in R one, which is low-density residential, which is your northeast McLean, and the properties on the west side, north and south of twenty-first, a couple blocks that abut like the railroad, city limits. So there's no other conditional permitting or components. Zoning matrix does essentially allow for it, so that you can do something conditionally upon, you know, council review or type of component. So this will be within an R two zone, that's the property in question, at eight oh six East eleven. Did you say there was time where you guys were going to, that was temporary?
Yes, so my plan is in the future to have them from March to September, if it's possible, if we get allowed to.
These are bottled goats, these aren't like.
Mountain goats.
These are bottled goats, they're literally like a month old. These are not like big brams and stuff, so basically, they're, though, they've been born, what, about a month ago? And right now, they're still bottle feeding. And by September, they'll probably only be about knee-high, and they'll probably go right back out to where they came from. These are not like your, like a curly rand goat or anything, these are basically about the size of a small dog. So. Well, I've received some correspondence from some of the neighbors, and they weren't, they weren't in favor of having goats in the neighborhood. They came to me and expressed their dissatisfaction with having goats in the neighborhood. Thought maybe it might hurt the property value. And I understand every neighborhood in Fall City has some conditions to it. Not everybody's exempt from hard cars, and we've been working diligently. This council has, for the last couple years, we've worked real hard. We've hired an ordinance officer to go around for trees and grasses, hanging branches, broken sidewalks, junk cars. We started a land bank to buy dilapidated properties, so we can flip them around because we have a housing shortage, and so we're trying to beautify this town, picks it up a little. We heard so much about it for the thirty-some years I've been here, is why aren't we doing more about it? Where we are spending taxpayer funds, working diligently on private properties, and so I can't fault any neighbor, and it's too bad. It used to be that, when we were asking for permits, whether they were moving in trailer houses or hobbyist permits for demo cars or metal buildings, that I must be missing, it used to be a neighborhood thing where if a neighbor wanted to do something and asking for a special permit from city council, they were supposed to talk to their neighbors and say, hey, this is our idea. I know it that way with mobile homes years ago, and I don't know where we got away with it. And redo it with the animal permits, and we weren't going to do automatic renewals with animal permits because case by case, seems like every time, and I've been here a couple minutes, and for years we fought cows and, and all sorts of things, and we used to have some pretty heated conversations here with neighbors, and it causes a lot of bad blood, and it was amazing, sometimes we can pass a five-million-dollar budget in thirty seconds, but we'd sit here and talk about two or three cows for an hour and a half. So I just, I just want to get on the record that there is some opposition from some of your neighbors about having goats, and maybe, you know, as I talked to you before the end of the day, I just told you, you know, hey, tell me about it, and of course, I had no idea, they're little baby goats, and they're cute and all that kind of stuff, and I understand that you have a fenced-in yard and that you're gonna do everything you can to keep them secure, and not get out, get in neighbor's gardens or anything like that, or butt anybody or anything like that, that, you know, didn't know what to expect. So I just thought I'd let you know that there is conversation in your neighborhood where they're just weren't real pleased with it, and then maybe they don't understand that they're gonna be little bitty guys, I don't know, but I thought I'd put that on the record.
Well, we've approved animal permits for pigs, for people that do this pets.
Right.
She did say that they also have, like, an alternative, like, if it becomes a problem, you have family that you can, like.
We're literally borrowing from, from a family member that, she won't sell them because they like, told her.
So if it becomes a problem, you have.
Yes, it does. It's just the fact that we're trying to teach experience and understanding of what it takes to take care of animals and show that's what four H is about, and that's what I've grown up with. So I want her to understand how it, that someone ain't always gonna be, grandma, grandpa, or mom and dad aren't gonna take care of chores for her, she's gonna have to learn responsibility and everything. So having them right there, she learns responsibility in teaching our youth.
And also, last year, we borrowed goats, we had to drive up by Dawson like two or three times a week to go up for about a half-hour visit to train with them. As we all know, gas prices and everything aren't cheap, and that would kill about an hour or two of our evening to, for other things, so. So this isn't a new thing, she showed them last year at the four H too, so.
I think that they serve a purpose, like they're, it's not just being kept as pets, it's temporary, and there is a solution if it becomes a problem. I think that's all I can ask for, they've taken, they have fencing, they have a plan.
So I know they talked about timber, and I asked that question for those two reasons. Essentially, our, what our ordinance, how we administrate it, is it's set up in the ordinance, it's, they're annual, so they expire on March thirty-one of each year. So if you're an issue permit, it would be an annual. They do go for renewal for just essentially a amount of ten dollars on that renewal, just like it would with cattle or anything else with like the other permits that we have. So that would still be in place. There can be objection filed to that renewal of the permits. We publicize those annually for those renewals, so just like we had the public hearing, those get pushed out, say, here's the renewals, and then go through that process. So just to give you guys an idea, it's not like, you know, I'm doing a conditional permit where you can say, hey, you need to meet XXX conditions. It's an animal permit that's straight across annual through March thirty-one essentially. Clear it up, make sure everyone's on the same page.
So if it's, if it becomes a nuisance for a neighbor, next year, it can be stopped possible if they still want.
Yes, the permit.
And in an automatic every year thing, if someone complains.
Yeah, so you still have to remain subject to nuisance regulations of the city. So that's still, that's within the, I guess, the ordinance essentially saying you still need to comply with nuisance regs, which would be, you know, manure, dealing with that, potential noise.
I'd make a motion to approve.
One second.
All right, so we got a first from Ratcliffe and a second from Rod.
Yep.
All vote.
All right, so let's see here, let these down. All right, six yeas, one nay, one absent.
I think one abstention, do you agree?
One abstention.
Oh, we have abstention. Who was our abstention? All right, Layden? Five yeas. Five yeas.
All right, move on to number three, discussion in action. Request to block off fourteen hundred block of Stone Street at five PM on five thirty-one, twenty-four through eleven fifty-nine on six one, twenty twenty-four to allow alcohol to be served for an outside event, Fall City, October.
Motion to approve.
All vote.
Seven yeas.
Number four, discussion in action. Request approval of a special designated liquor license to allow alcohol to be served at Pritchard Auditorium on eight, ten, twenty-four for a wedding reception.
Motion to approve.
Seven yeas.
Number five, discussion in action. Request approval of special designated liquor license to allow alcohol to be served for the Hot Air Balloon Festival in Brerfield on six fourteen, twenty-four and six fifteen, twenty-four. Camera's gone.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All vote.
Seven yeas.
Number six, discussion in action. Approval for switch station or a request for qualifications for the civil engineering services for the phase three downtown redevelopment landscape improvement project.
All right, so I provided a written report for that, just to try to provide an update regarding the DTR program, or the two thousand twenty-three DTR project. Since we have five hundred thirty-five thousand, two hundred thirty-five thousand of that is slated for public infrastructure improvements, with the remaining, with the remaining hundred sixty-five thousand for commercial rehab. We have a little over forty-one thousand in matching funds that would come from business owners, and then fifty-eight thousand, seven fifty would come from our general fund for a piece of that. The rest is grant management. The, we're awaiting the lead of that yet, so that's going through environmental components, which is pretty well about wrapped up. What was submitted for design would have been the sidewalks. We submitted for five blocks along Stone Street, which would be the east and west sides of, between eighteenth and nineteenth, fifteenth to sixteenth, the fifteen hundred block, eighteen hundred block, and then also the west half of fourteen hundred block. So now, two hundred thirty-five thousand dollars is probably not gonna get us across that. But doing the due diligence for the environment, they have it all in there. Ideally, you hire an engineer, and we could potentially get that all designed and ready to go. That could just be led either through a future DTR, we already have the design pieces, it just needs to be bid out, or it could be the project utilized with other, some other funding source if you wanted to finish that. With, with the, beyond the sidewalk upgrades, or the street improvements, the commercial businesses, essentially seventy-five percent of their costs are eligible, like facade improvements, anything to fix, any code violations, and they would have a twenty-five percent match for that component. We should have a release of funds here fairly soon. We can solicit our engineering firm, but we cannot actually sign a contract with that firm until we get the lease from DED, which we're expecting to have in the next week or so. So I wanted to go ahead and get this pushed through, get this listed out, it needs to go through a timeframe, and then essentially request qualifications, make those submittals, and then council would review those, do the interview process, and eventually make a solicitation or acceptance of what firm we want to move forward with. So there is, on the side though, for the downtown businesses, on May twenty-second, Wednesday at six PM here at council chambers, we'll have an open house to kind of talk through the grant components. we'll have an open house to kind of talk through the grant components that is available for the businesses. We'll have Southern Nebraska Development District, which is our grant administrator onsite. We should also have N D D onsite and also the rest of state, this Oracle Preservation Office. We'll all be here to kind of put on a presentation and explain those components. So I drafted up, I guess, a request for qualifications.
I have a motion to approve.
Perfect.
Second.
All vote.
Seven yeas.
Number seven, discussion in action, review and approval for professional grant services for the twenty twenty-three PHMSA NGDIMSM grant as recommended after.
Once you say pull out of that.
Right. This was a grant we looked at last year. And we're always looking for, chasing down pots of money that are there for infrastructure improvements. We have a long road to go to get, get that done and an expensive venture to start with. There is a five-year grant cycles for natural gas distribution systems. They're already two years into it or they had one year of solicitation before I came into office. We looked at trying to get it done in the second year and the grant scope is ginormous, super competitive. Even the, after being administered, they still haven't even got the first and second lead actually let out with the requirements that they put, put together. But since it was out of my wheelhouse, we looked for, you know, some people that can write those. So we looked up essentially what entity was getting the most awards. And it was this Southern Cathodic Protection Group was helping out with any other entities across the nation and they were getting the most awards. So we contacted them, kind of went through the components, what it would be to actually write that grant and try to chase that, that pot of money. It's a big chunk of change. We have our gas distribution projects kind of slated, you know, we did phase eight last year. When we chased this down, we'd be looking at doing probably five to ten times the size of that project. You know, you're asking for probably a couple of million dollars when you're, when you're making these assets of, I think, we're heading to about five hundred some odd million each year that's available for this grant. So. We wanted to get that done. Board Public Works reviewed it. This is actually what was submitted in the agenda last year's submittal that we didn't act upon. So I do have an updated agreement. Essentially it's the exact same, replaced two thousand twenty-three or two thousand forty-four. It's the only difference there. So Board Public Works is recommending moving forward with that and hiring that service.
Any idea where Oz will be getting a grant like this?
It's, we have all the info. That's the one thing that our gas system is very well documented. Everything we have for our D O Q systems and what Mark has, Mark, you know, Ramsey or Gasser put in place. We have all the data. Essentially you got to show that you have outdated system. So they want steel systems out of the ground. So you got to know exactly how many linear feet you have, how it's going to impact the community. We have all that data. So we've been doing that forever. We've, we've shown how much we can replace. And so it's, we have a pretty good shot at it, I believe. It's just we need to make sure it meets the stipulations of the grant, you know, and get the entity that can navigate through those components. So it is a ticked out off the one little thing that got missed.
I'd say go for it. I make a motion that we follow along with what the Board Public Works is recommending.
One second.
All vote.
Seven yeas.
Number eight, discussion in action, request for a C Y twenty twenty-four funding of five thousand dollars for the Fall City Recreation Agency.
This is the normal annual funding at Fall City Rec time requests. We're hoping to get together and actually the Parks Board and actually create the interlocal for this component. And we just, my time has not been able to get dedicated to get that done. So they submitted their request just like they did all the other years with this annual piece. Kind of same thing as they detailed out to do the, the leagues, the T-ball, the swim team, swim lesson, soccer, basketball, take care of jack in the fields and chalking everything with that five thousand commitments. So that is budgeted. However, Park Board has to get any approval over or any expenditure over seven hundred fifty dollars approved by council. So the item is proper for council.
Motion to approve. Second.
All vote.
Six yeas, one abstention.
Nine, discussion in action, provide authorization to execute an agreement for an asphalt overlay on the old tennis basketball court located at Dallas Jones Park as recommended by the Parks Board.
All right. This was a project the Parks Board looked at. This is the old courts that are on the very southeast corner of Dallas Jones Memorial Park. There's been talk about it for years and years and years. So what to do down there? It's very neglected. They did put budgets in this last fiscal year to try to accomplish something down there with constructors onsite to look at like an asphalt overlay. They're in town. We had them give us a number. We already mowed out here. So they provided a cost of, I think it was about thirty-six thousand dollars, which it did include sales tax that has to be removed out. So they're getting that revised. Park Board was going to meet last week, but we didn't have a form. So I wanted to bring this item directly out so we can get this actually looked at and done, which they had already planned it for budget to get completed. However, that's not going to get the job done. I mean, that's, that's really getting the asphalt done. Trevor and the Parks Team went out. It's, it's cracked surface. It's either remove it or try to rehab it, you know, realistically. It does have bad drainage in it now because there's an embankment. So there's some work that needs to be done with that. However, the court itself does still drain and meet slope requirements to put in a overlay, like just basically a two inch overlay. It'll still meet less than two percent slope across it. We may have, you know, some future maintenance because it's not really shifting down there, but it is displaced. So you could potentially develop a crack that would need to be, be maintained. Putting up a new court is going to be a lot more cost than thirty, thirty-five thousand. Granted, you still would need other work out there like the lighting. We need some retaining wall work and the sidewalk. The court is big enough for a full regulation basketball court, actually NBA reg basketball court. And it still, I think, has ten, fifteen feet on north and south. That's extra length. And then potentially two pickleball courts on the other eastern half. So that was kind of the Park Board's idea of rehabbing that, putting some permanent pickleball nets up and getting another basketball court onsite.
I think that'd be a really nice addition. The basketball court that was rehabbed a couple of years ago gets tons of use. And I've heard great things about the pickleball court that's on the tennis courts now. And this would be a really nice upgrade to Dallas Jones.
I think you just had Ferg appointed as the lead of this and get this one done too.
Thirty-five thousand dollars just to overlay. I put up a basketball court for fifty-five thousand dollars on the ball country, but that was a few years back. You know, I've been, I've been harnessing this for years, you know, and brought up ideas before about making use of it. And I'm glad that this has come back through and they're going to overlay and make it usable. My thoughts years ago was making a parking lot out of it for the baseball field. And that's where I was at. Like scoping out, bringing that down and add more additional parking and getting off the streets. And then of course, that really was bought north of there and that, that alleviated the parking problem. And I think this is great. I really do.
I can help research some grant opportunities. I think even like with the lighting, there might be some like U S D A funding if you're going to the L E D and then.
We were fortunate enough to, to get the lighting over on the twenty-first of Legion Park. A lot of that went through the Board of Public Works, but they were able to, you know, there were some people that, you know, and especially if you, if you try and get behind it with a little bit of a fundraiser too, it helps with your grants.
Yeah, most of them are matched.
Yeah. And so, you know, if you can get somebody else behind it, just besides Fall City Rec or Fall City Rec, you can just get behind it. That way they put their name on instead of City of Fall City because sometimes people will look at those grant applications and say, well, this is not just a city of Fall City. I think it's a great idea and I'm glad the Board of, or Park Board came up with it.
And then that, that community, that side of town, it needs something over there. There's really, I mean, they got the ball fields, but they need a basketball court.
The south part, we just got yelled at for that.
Well, the grant was at the south, but yeah, like over there and there's something more to do. You've got the playground equipment and so that's been a need. And ever since they decided not to do the rodeos and the demo jerseys down at that end, that does sort of get overlooked anymore. They usually horseshoe pit's down there. That used to be a big deal. Wonder what it was? A long time ago, something after it was going down there, when I was a kid watching those guys pit shoes and that was pretty cool back then.
I'll make a motion to authorize them to execute the asphalt agreement. Let's get the ball rolling on that.
Seven yeas.
The end of the agenda.
That's right. That's right.